Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, as some of you are doing this evening, and some online. Or you can also watch us on burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel 16, or 859. The public can also join us on Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. And more information is available on our meetings webpage and in the council agenda The next item on the agenda is announcements, and we have one proclamation. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, October 8th at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, October 22nd at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, October 15th at 5:30 p.m., and our quarterly roundtable on Tuesday, October 29th at 6:30 p.m. And unless it's noted, all of the meetings of the city council is in the chambers. And then we have one proclamation, and I'll do it from that side. Members of the council and community of Burnsville, tonight we have one proclamation. It's for Constitution Week, whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitutional Week. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth P. Couch, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, to be Constitution Week in Burnsville, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, proclaim this 17th day of September, 2024. And with us this evening, our members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, who will be receiving the proclamation, and Ms. Nick Jones of Burnsville is a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and she also has Mrs. Susan Nolan, who will also be with us. And you both are with the Daughters of the American Revolution. So thank you so much for your service to our country and to our community of Burnsville and to the region. And we appreciate your being here. Thank you so much. And I think we'll stand over there and have... Yeah. And we'll put this over here for you. And then we'll take a picture of you, and we'll have it there. So you just stand in the middle here and I'm at the south. Okay. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience or online to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not an application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online, ma'am.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
Nothing from staff, ma'am.
Okay, members of the council? Okay, we will then move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on a consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Anyone? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
We have someone online for a consent agenda item. However, if it's not pulled, they don't need to discuss it.
Okay, very good. All right. City Manager Lindberg, does staff want to pull anything?
Not from staff, ma'am.
Members of the council? Councilmember Gustafson?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull 4P.
Okay. 4P is pulled for a separate discussion and vote. May I have a motion for the balance, please?
Move to approve.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you. 4P is to accept the bids and award the contract for Greenwood Drive sidewalk. Councilmember Gustafson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I pulled this, this has been a project that we've kind of been talking about for about three years or so. About three years ago, Representative Hanson introduced me to Mike O'Brien. He's a young man that lived at Leah's Place as a residence we have in Burnsville where everyone there has disabilities, and they had no sidewalks to get to five. And so they're in the streets with wheelchairs, walkers. I see a lot of them, and I was just talking with DJ, our fire chief here just recently, that a lot of those people in the wheelchairs actually take that all the way up to Target from 13 just to go shopping. But they had to get in the street to get there in a very, in a dangerous area where there's a lot of traffic and a lot of driving. We were able to get that done. Thank you for the council for agreeing to put that on our CIP for 2024. The reason I bring it is, this young man has been ill for a long time. He's supposed to get a transplant. I think that has failed now, that he's not going to happen. But he's a young man that just really lobbied to get this done and just helped the entire neighborhood. And I just wanted to kind of, I wanted to bring it up because this is a person that did this work to get it done. He actually got on our Citizens Review Committee. He used to take Uber to get here just to be at our meetings. And it affected an entire neighborhood. We're now going to be able to service three multi-housing units to get that sidewalks in. And they use that sidewalk to go to five, they get it to use to go to the laundromat and that sort of thing. And what I want to get across is, you need to get involved. If you have something that you want to get done, come see us about it. Come talk to us, whether it's at the diocese, just call us in person, and we can try and work through it and maybe get some things done for you. So you can make a difference. And if Mike, if you're watching, I want you to know you made a difference for an entire neighborhood. And with that, I would like to move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. And before I call for the vote, one of the things is that we all got to know Mike. And he's a courageous young man, and he got engaged. And this is one of those things where there was a need, and there, and he talked to all of us about it. He talked to you first, but he talked to all of us about this need. And this is how people in our community can make a difference in how we spend, you know, tax dollars. And this is being funded under our infrastructure trust fund. And so here we are, doing something that is going to help our residents who need a lot of help, and creates a safe environment for them rather than being on the public street. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you. The first item on the agenda then is the resolution establishing the proposed budget, the 2025 proposed tax levy, and authorizing the cancellation of certain deferred tax levies. And presenting this evening is our deputy city manager and CFO, Mrs. Jennifer Rhodey. Mrs. Rhodey?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight's discussion will be for the proposed property tax revenue, our property tax levy and EDA tax levy. We've had, up till tonight, we've had a number of budget meetings. We started in March with our FMP presentation, our Financial Management Plan presentation. In July, we discussed our CIP and Capital Projects Funds. In August, we reviewed the operating budget, property tax, proposed property tax levy and general fund. And last week, we discussed utility funds, enterprise funds, and fees and charges. So tonight is the kind of culmination of those discussions in terms of what the proposed property tax or max tax levy will be. This levy can be reduced, it can't be increased, and leads up to our final approval of the tax levy in December. Again, tonight, we're looking at those resolutions to adopt the proposed levy for the city and EDA. We do have one, our next scheduled meeting is a 2025 discussion for the budget at the November 26th work session. That is an if-needed budget work session. And then the final scheduled budget and levy discussion is December 5th, where the council will adopt the final city and EDA tax levy. In terms of the 2025 budget, just a few things to review. We've balanced to the 7.06 tax levy increase. The impact to the median value home is approximately $5 per month. Taxable market value across the city increased about 0.4% or $35 million for pay 2025 property taxes. And with that tax increase, the tax rate increased from 42.5% to 45.3% approximately. One of the items we discussed in August is, as we put the budget together, we did, staff did, put together about $1.6 million in budget effectiveness corrections to balance the budget to that 7.06% increase. So there's been a lot of work done over the last few months to really get that budget balanced to that target level tax increase. In terms of some things that are impacting this budget and future budgets, we have studies that are ongoing that will inform future budgets, capital improvement studies ranging from pavement management to fleet, water treatment plant, condition assessment, parks plan, and then an IT assessment and a facilities capital plan. So we've got a number of, a couple of studies we've discussed at previous meetings over this year, and have some future studies to come at the end of this year and into next year. Those will inform this budget and future budgets. Annually, we're updating our organizational analysis. So we did an update last December and will be coming again early, later in the year or early next year with an update to that organizational analysis to inform the next year's budget. Couple of ongoing operational studies, a communication assessment. We know we have fire department standards of cover coming up, as well as IT assessments. We have implemented the police staffing assessment into this current year's budget. So that was implemented for 2025. In terms of our financial management plan and the property tax projections over the next five years, we do have around 7% annually. Those first three years, '25, '26, '27, really do balance to that non-binding levy resolution that is actually contained in the resolution you'll see tonight, or you'll consider tonight. And then '28 and '29 are outside of those, that non-binding resolution, and we've projected approximately 7% with what we know today. And that was something we looked at at the August meeting. In terms of total budget, revenues and other sources of income are approximately $143 million for this year, with 54.4 of that being property taxes. That's about 38% of the total city budget. $39.6 million is charges for services, and most of that is coming from the utility funds with charges for water, sanitary, and stormwater funds. As we look at expenditures and uses, the city's largest expenditures are really our people, our staff who carry out those operations in all our areas, public safety, streets, parks, you know, finance, IT, all those areas. So that really is the largest part of expenditures across the city, with capital investment being that second largest at $48.9 million. So a total of approximately $152 million across all city funds is the budget for this As we look at the resolutions or at the information that you'll consider tonight in the property tax resolutions, the total city levy is proposed to be $52,886,987. That's about a $3.3 million increase, or about 6.7% year-over-year. The EDA levy is proposed to be $1.5 million, or about a $250,000 increase over last year. So that brings the total city and EDA levy to approximately $54.4 million, a change of about $3.6 million over last year, or 7.06%. And just a couple of review slides from our August meeting, taxable market values. As we look at the breakdown of taxable market values, those residential values make up about 62% of the value of the value of property within the city. Commercial industrial value is about 20%. That has shifted a little bit, with commercial and industrial values increasing a little more than residential, more than residential values this year, but still an increase, still within, this is actually bringing those percentages a little closer to what they were about four or five years ago before residential values increased so high. So there is just a little shift there. As we look at estimated market values over the past 10 years, we can look at the median value home as well as the estimated market values, and they do increase about the same. You can see in 2025, there is a little narrowing of that margin as residential values did not increase as much as the other values within the city apartments or commercial values. And that's a trend that we're seeing across, you know, across the metro area. So that's pretty in line with other cities of our size. In terms of the five-year trends, this table just kind of reviews those five-year trends of where we've been with property tax increases, tax rates, and our market values. As you can see, in 2023 was that substantial increase in market values, about a billion, a billion, well, yeah, about $1 billion. And median home values also in that time really increased, and they have leveled off in the last couple of years. And property tax increases over the last five years, we had that larger increase in 2023 to really fund the organizational analysis. And 2024 and 2025 have followed at 7.63 and 7.06, really adhering to that non-binding resolution that we set in 2022. Tonight, in front of you, you have three resolutions, and I'll just run through kind of the formal actions that will be taken. First, the city council will consider the proposed 2025 tax levy certification. Following that, we'll recess and convene the EDA meeting, where you'll consider the proposed 2025 EDA tax levy certification. Once that is complete, you'll recess that meeting and reconvene the city council meeting where you will consider the EDA proposed tax levy and consider the approval on that. So those are kind of those, that step-by-step process for those approvals or those considerations tonight. And again, I'll end on the budget calendar, just kind of as a review. These are the remaining meetings where we've, where right now they're on the calendar to discuss the 2025 budget and tax levy. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember Keely, I saw your hand move.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodey. Can you share what you know of other cities' current proposed or possibly adopted max tax?
Yeah, they're, I would say we are in the middle to bottom half of that. Many cities with double, or a number of cities with double-digit tax levies, some of our neighbors with, I think, 13%, 10%, 12%. We are on the bottom half of that with the 7.06%. I think the lowest I've seen is maybe four and a half. I don't have it sitting in front of me, but I can definitely share that information. But yeah, we are, we are seeing, I think a lot of cities are seeing those pressures. They're certainly seeing, I know a number of them in the parks and public safety areas, and they're responding with higher proposed levies than we've seen in the past.
Thank you. It's been a tough post-COVID inflationary picture for everyone, from citizens to businesses to cities, as we are a business. And talking to some of our fellow elected in other cities, I've been pretty astounded at what I've heard that they're dealing with and having to decide on whether they support or not. One of the things that I think, you know, as we look back over the last three or four years, where we have been at 7%, I know there's cities around us that have spiked up into double digits, come back down, and now they're back up again. And I'm very proud of the fact that we have budgeted in a way, using some federal money some years ago, to just moderate those peaks. And never in my wildest dreams would I have thought seven was at the low end, and that we'd be having to accept 7% as a number that was managed very, very tightly, a number that we got to because of some strong leadership within the city to cut costs and to contain costs. When you have inflation running as bad as it's been the last three or four years, that's not a small feat. And hats off to the leadership under Greg and yourself and the other department heads for maintaining this 7% goal that, you know, wasn't etched in concrete, but it was the spirit of this body, or the majority of this body, that said, we don't want to go any higher than that. And now, as we compare ourselves in our third or fourth year of the 7% to these other cities in double digits, although 7% has never been acceptable to me, it feels good to be at 7% and not at 10, 11, 12, or 13%. So thank you for the work.
One of the things that I'm proud of is all of the hard work that has been done, because I want our residents to also know that they can go onto our budget webpage and see all the work that has been done, as well as look at all of the department reports to all of us and what they're doing. That's all great, but one of the things that we have done in the city of Burnsville, we have been very conservative. And that's good on one end, but on the other end, we find ourselves in a position, because our community has changed quite a bit, and the demand for services, especially for public safety, has gone up. And especially in the area of behavioral health and also in mental health calls. And when I look at the data each and every month coming out of both police and fire, it is vertical on EMS calls and vertical on behavioral health and mental health calls and all the others, because Burnsville, I want people to know, is a very safe city. And we have a great public safety department, police and fire, who respond in a manner to keep our community safe. And everybody else is in support of that. We have Public Works, we have everyone in finance. And so we have worked very hard, to Councilmember Keely's comments, you know? We had to make some tough decisions during the recession. We made some tough decisions coming out of COVID. But in the same, at the same time, we relied on our financial management plan. We relied on looking at budgets five years out. And because of all of those practices, we find ourselves in a position that we can continue to provide services to our citizens and to be good stewards of their assets. So to your leadership, to Greg's leadership, and to all of our department heads, thank you for the work that you do to ensure that our community is safe and they receive the services that they expect of us. And that's what we're here to do, is to work for the people. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, I would like to thank council and staff for sticking to the non-binding resolution. This was something I proposed, and I have a lot of appreciation on that everyone worked together to abide by that, realizing that, as our attorney would tell us, it's absolutely non-binding. But...
But it's in the spirit of collaboration.
Exactly. And I don't want people to get it twisted on what my vote is, because it'll be a different vote, most likely, on December 5th. But I will be voting in favor of this, because I asked for this resolution and everyone worked towards it. And so it would be a jerk move to then vote no at this point.
Hey! This is your first...
Don't get too excited, is what I'm saying.
Your first budget! What? Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. I guess I just want to echo what everybody else has said and say thank you to staff for getting us to this point, and also reflect on our discussions the same time last year with a significantly higher number, where we had to kind of take a not-so-comfortable position with a higher levy in order to get to a more consistent levy this year and in out-years. So I appreciate our staff's diligent work, again, to get us here and then get us on to a consistent path moving forward. Obviously, things can change year-over-year, nothing is locked in, but by all accounts, it looks like we're going to be in a good position moving forward, especially when we look at some of our neighbors who are looking at double-digit levies this year and into the... looking at double-digit levies this year and into the coming years. So thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gustafson?
Well, I could say what everyone else is saying, but I, I want to kind of say how we got here in a way as well. You know, when Councilmember Schultz and I came on the council in 2017, our budget was, the levy was like $32 million that year. Our, our public safety was about $22 million that year. In 2024, public safety was 33 million. There are actually more than what we did for the entire levy in 2017. Those are the pressures we face. And as we try to run this city as efficiently as we can and keep it safe. And sometimes it's, they say it's the price you have to pay. Nobody wants, wants to pay more taxes, but sometimes we just have to do what we have to do. I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. With that then, members of the council, the action that I need from you is, one, is to adopt the resolution to establish the proposed budget and also the 2025 proposed tax levy.
Move to approve, second?
There's a motion and a second. The clerk has that, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries unanimously.
Yay.
Don't get excited. There's still December 5th.
Okay, and I will now.
Saying we got a chance.
I will now recess the Burnsville City Council meeting so the Economic Development Authority meeting can proceed. And with that, President Gustafson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I'll call the Economic Development Authority meeting to order. The clerk will please note that all commissioners are present. Item number one, are there any additions to the final agenda? Seeing none, I will move on. Item two is the consent agenda, and that's approval of the minutes. Is there anyone who wishes an item to be removed in the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote? Seeing none, I will, I need a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the February 6th meeting is the last time we met on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Keely?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed, and it passes. Next item is a resolution approving a proposed tax levy by the Burnsville Economic Development Authority, EDA, for taxes payable 2025. Jennifer Rody, our deputy city manager and CFO, is presenting.
I'll keep it short. Tonight, we're, we're proposing a $1.5 million tax levy for payable 2025. I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Motion by Commissioner Couch, second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And it, and it, oh yeah, one nay. Division of the House. Since, since there's no other business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn by Commissioner Keely, second by Commissioner Schultz. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned, and I pass it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I will now reconvene the meeting of the Burnsville City Council. And the one item that is left on the agenda is for the council to ratify the proposed levy of the Economic Development Authority. I don't think, Ms., Mrs. Rody, you have anything else to add to this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Our CFO did say that November, there may be another meeting. Personally, I don't think we need another meeting. I'd like to ask our council if they feel the same.
Yeah, well, she did say if needed. It's a, yeah, yeah.
No meeting?
We don't need.
Mr. Keely?
Yeah. So can I have a motion first to ratify? Before we have another discussion, I'd like the ratification.
You got it.
Of the Economic Development Authority's tax levy. There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
And the clerk has a division of the House. Okay. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening and.
Motion to adjourn.
And there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you for being with us and good evening and have a good night.